Misses Buckley.
Here.
Mr. Christensen.
Here.
Mrs. Cook.
Here.
Mrs. Dobus.
Here.
Mr. Means.
Here.
Mr. Nagel.
Here.
Mrs. Rule.
Here.
Mr. Workmeister.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you, sir. This evening, it is our pleasure to recognize a special Bethel Park High School athlete for an outstanding year, competing for her school and gaining recognition on the national stage. Her accomplishments are many, and you'll probably need a paper and pencil to keep track of everything, but we wanted to share some of the highlights with you this evening, so you can get a better understanding of the kind of year she has had this past school year. Emily Carter began her sophomore year running on the cross-country team, winning the Slippery Rock Invitational, finishing in third place at the Whipple Championships and in 11th place at States, culminating in a season that saw her named one of the top 25 best runners in Pennsylvania. Her indoor track season this past winter continued her success, as she earned a gold medal in the 3,000 meters at the TSTCA Indoor Track and Field Championships and a silver medal at States, as well as turning in the 16th best time in the country for this event. Her time at States earned her a shot at the National Indoor Track Championships, where she finished in seventh place in the mile. Emily built upon her success in cross-country and indoor track to have an outstanding outdoor track season this past spring, as she won the Whipple Championship in both the 1,600 and 3,200 meters. At States, she finished in third place in the 1,600 meters and set a state record on her way to winning the gold medal in the 3,200 meters. Earlier this month, she competed at the New Balance Outdoor National Championships in Greensboro, North Carolina, and finished in third place in the two-mile and fourth place in the 5,000 meters. Those resulted, those results earned her All-American status. Additionally, she was named to the Pennsylvania All-State Indoor Track and Field Team in three, in the 3,000 meters, and the Pennsylvania Track and Field Coaches Association named her All-State Second Team. Emily, it is our pleasure this evening to present you with a certificate of recognition for all of your accomplishments this past school year, but especially for that Whipple and State gold medal, which I'm sure you're very proud of. We can only imagine the amount of hard work, commitment, and dedication you put forth this past year to achieve these lofty heights. You have set the bar very high for yourself. We can't wait to see what you accomplish during your junior and senior years. It is my understanding that the Athletic Department is in the process of creating a special banner in the gym to recognize all of Bethel Park's previous track, state individual champions, and of course, your accomplishment will be also on that banner. I also understand you will be receiving special recognition at one of our football games in this fall as well. At this time, I would like to invite your coaches, Jack Hartnell and Mark Jacobs, and you up front, so we can congratulate you on this great year. Give her a round of...
(applause) All right, coaches, why don't you get on the floor. I've got to go. I'm going 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 to go. I'd like to mention also, along with tagging the veterans' banners throughout the community, so family members can locate them easier, and cleaning up, or helping to keep clean the Veterans Memorial, she was instrumental in helping get the Memorial Day Parade off and going well, so I just wanted to recognize that also.
Wonderful, a woman of many talents. Congratulations again, Emily, keep up the great work. I need a motion to adopt the agenda for business items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 28, 2019, and the special meeting of June 5, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. I need to announce executive sessions held June 11, 2019 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, June 18, 2019 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information, and June 25, 2019 for personnel, other legal matters, and to receive information. Staff report, and Mrs. Sutton?
We are pleased to be able to share the following items of good news with you this evening to close out the 2018-2019 school year. Congratulations to the 350 members of the Bethel Park High School class of 2019 who graduated on Saturday, June the 8th. This year's class of high achievers included 205 students who graduated with a QPA of 3.5 or higher. Eighty-eight percent of our graduates will continue their education at a two- or four-year college, while 7% will attend a trade technical school or participate in an apprenticeship. Three percent will work, enter the workforce, and seven graduates will enter the military. We are proud of this year's graduates and wish them the best in their futures. Bethel Park High School held its annual Awards and Recognition Night on May 29, with several representatives from local organizations and universities on hand to present scholarships and awards to several of our graduates. In addition, certificates were presented to all seniors who were receiving a scholarship, and honor cords were distributed to those students who were graduating with honors or higher. It was a great evening to celebrate the accomplishments of the class of 2019. Bethel Park High School's French students did well on the National French Exams, with three students earning gold medals, three students earning silver medals, six students earning bronze medals, and 13 students receiving honorable mention status. All of their names are on the screen before you, but we wanted to take this time to give special recognition to gold medalists Tobias Rule, Marissa Wyssinski, and Toyosi Egbebi. Congratulations to all of these students for their hard work in French class. The Bethel Park High School German Club presented its end-of-the-year awards to two students. Freshman Willow Harnishen earned a full scholarship to study at the Millersville University Summer German Language Camp, and junior Jacob Bauer received the Dietrich Award of Academic Excellence as the student with the highest overall academic achievements. Jacob also received a certificate of honor, naming him the most outstanding member of the high school's chapter of the German National Honor Society. Congratulations to both of these students. For the third consecutive year, the Bethel Park High School chess team finished its season undefeated. Congratulations to Kobe Coleman, Adam Collier, Matthew Casaldi, Sebastian Di Prampiero, Tanush Ball, and Calvin Walsh. Our spring sports season concluded with many wonderful accolades. As you heard previously this evening, Bethel Park High School track athlete Emily Carter broke a state record on her way to becoming the state champion in the 3,200 meters and is the Whipple champion in the 1,600 and 3,200 meters. Twelve athletes qualified for the WPIL Girls Track Championships, and two athletes competed at States. Our boys volleyball team were the undefeated section champions, Whipple finalists, and state semifinalists. Our baseball team won the section championship, advanced to the Whipple semifinals, and played in the Whipple consolation game. Seven members of our boys' track team competed at the Whipple Championships, with two athletes competing at States. The girls' softball team were section co-champions and Whipple quarterfinalists, and both our girls' and boys' lacrosse teams advanced to the Whipple quarterfinals. Congratulations to all of these teams for the exciting season. The Athletic Department held its annual college-bound student-athlete recognition reception to honor the 15 student-athletes who will be continuing their athletic careers next year on the collegiate level. Congratulations and best wishes to all of these students. Also at the athletic recognition reception, the girls' varsity soccer team received the highest-team GPA award. The award is calculated by averaging all of the varsity team athletes' GPAs for the first three nine weeks of the school year. The girls' soccer team won this award with an impressive 4.12 GPA. The average GPA for all Bethel Park High School varsity athletes was an equally impressive 3.792. Keep up the good work in the classroom. Independence Middle School held its annual eighth-grade awards assembly and presented several awards to students to recognize them for academic, athletic, artistic, musical, and leadership achievements. You can see all of this year's award recipients online on the IMS Latest News webpage. Congratulations to all of these students. We look forward to hearing more from them as they continue next year as Bethel Park High School students. Independence Middle School also held its annual Academic Excellence Program, and this year, 115 7th graders and 158 8th graders received distinguished honors for maintaining a minimum 3.75 QPA through the first three nine weeks of the 2018-19 school year. Additionally, 116 8th graders received Presidential Academic Excellence Awards for maintaining at least a 3.5 QPA from 7th grade through the first three nine weeks of the 2018-19 school year, and scoring advanced on either the PSSA reading or math test. Congratulations to all of these students as well for their commitment to academic excellence. Neil Armstrong 5th graders in Ms. Rylander's room had a great time making scale-sized replicas of the Oliver Miller Homestead. They visited the South Park landmark to make some measurements after learning a little bit more about the Whiskey Rebellion and its significance to our area. Then they went back to school to calculate how to scale what they measured to create mini versions of the main house and the spring house using ratios. They did a wonderful job, and you can see their work on display at the Bethel Park Public Library. I'm pleased to announce that all five of our WQED Writers Contest finalists were winners in this year's contest. Congratulations to first-place winners Lincoln kindergarten student Jack Ford and Franklin 4th grader Adele Stamenoff. Second-place winners Lincoln 1st grader Alexis King and Franklin 3rd grader Sydney Kalender, and third-place winner Lincoln 2nd grader Olivia Anderson. We hope you have time to check out their creative stories on the WQED Writers Contest Last month, we heard about how William Penn students used the Camp Invention Steam Kit the district purchased for all five of our elementary schools. This month, we wanted to highlight the work the Washington Elementary students did with their Living Spaces Steam Module, which they showcased on a special Steam Day in May. In this activity, students were charged with either creating a nest for a fantasy bird or creating a personalized space station. They all did a great job. William Penn students look forward to participating in great, appropriate, hands-on science activities when representatives from Alka-Sand visit their school. Kindergarten students enjoy learning how to mix colors to create liquid rainbows and then go outside to spray water into the air to make their own rainbows. The Lincoln Elementary School Community Garden to Benefit Shim looks even more beautiful thanks to a mural painted on the wall behind the garden by Lincoln art teacher Kelly Eckert Graffum. This eye-catching from the parking lot bright blue mural incorporates pictures of the veggies that are grown in the garden, as well as the theme Lincoln Groves. You can't miss it when you get out of your car in the Lincoln parking lot, it's beautiful. Thank you, Mrs. Eckert Graffum, for sharing your artistic talents to make the lush green garden even more outstanding. The Bethel Park School District recently underwent a review of its Title I federal programs and received a letter from Susan McCrone, Chief of the Pennsylvania Department of Education's Division of Federal Programs, stating that the federal programs consolidated review for the 2018-2019 school year indicated that the district's Title I, Title II Part A, Title II, and Title IV Part A programs are in complete compliance with current statute, regulations, and guidance released by the U.S. Department of Education. Congratulations to federal programs coordinator Ms. Wells and all of our Title I program teachers for a great job. It's been a great school year with many examples of excellence by our students and staff, and it has been our pleasure to be able to share all of these examples with you throughout the school year. This concludes our final report for the 2018-19 school year. We look forward to being able to share even more great news with you next school year. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Student government is off, I assume PTA, PTO council is off, solicitor report?
Uh.
Do we have any board committee reports?
I'm pleased to say that Steel Center, Dr. Lutz, has finally negotiated the contract that's been going on for a year, and we finally have a settlement, which is great because Steel Center's going into a record enrollment year, so that was good news for us. The other report is on the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. They were one of 12 Pittsburgh-based organizations that have been invited to go to Finland to present their innovative teaching practices in, in teaching and learning, so we're very proud of that. They also completed their ACT 44 for their planning for safety and security, and they received an over $400,000 grant, and for that grant, there will be classes given on safety and security. There's also a piece of equipment they're getting that will connect all of the 42 schools that will enable these schools to network in case of an emergency. So those are some exciting things coming down the pike for the Allegheny Intermediate Unit. And the one thing I can say in working with them, we oversee 42 school districts, and we just got a, you never know what kind of request you're going to get. We just got a request from one of the burrows in Allegheny County for us to intervene, they were having issues with racial inequality in their schools, and their borough council contacted us and wanted us to intervene, but we can do several things with the schools. And we do send temporary personnel, like if a business manager leaves a school district, we do supply them with a temporary business manager, so we help them out in that way. But we do not intervene, we don't have the authority to help them with other issues that their schools might have. So, but other than that, Shasta Reese for the phone.
Okay, thank you. Any public comments on agenda items this evening? Seeing none, we'll move into business items. Curriculum Committee and Mrs. Buckley, do you want to take that, or do you want me to have someone who's present on the floor take that?
I think it might be best to have someone take it on the floor so everyone can hear it.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Dobus, would you take curriculum committee for me this evening?
Sure. In under curriculum committee, there are ten items. And does anyone want any held out? I'm personally going to hold out four through nine.
I'd like to hold out 10.
10. And the others? Okay, so first of all then, I'd like to move the first four items under curriculum committee, or first three items, excuse me. The 2019-2020 student handbooks, independent studies number two, and professional development number three.
Thank you, I need a second.
Second.
Items one through three under curriculum committee have been moved by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Dobus.
I'd like to move number four, purchase of high school AP Biology books. Purchase, number five, purchase of AP Chemistry books. Six, purchase of AP Physics books. Seven, purchase of the SAM Lab and STEAM course bundles in SAM Labs Learning to Code. Eight, purchase of elementary science kits from Asset STEM Education. And number nine, purchase of elementary science kits from Foss Incorporated.
Second.
Items one, four through nine under curriculum committee have been moved by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mr. Means. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I do, I apologize, first of all, I wasn't here last week, so I couldn't ask this question last week. I just wanted to know if these recommendations, four through nine, are, these science recommendations are as a result of curriculum committee recommendations?
So, in four, five, and six, they did come from the curriculum facilitator and the folks teaching the class.
Okay.
Number seven, well, let me just finish those, because we had some discussion, if that's okay, and then we'll move our way down. So on four, five, and six, we were asked to find out, and Ms. Wells can jump in, but in general, the finding was is that although it probably won't be necessary, in their opinion, AP Bio and AP Chemistry would make changes if necessary. Physics felt that there just wouldn't be, they don't feel that there will be a need. We did put on the agenda, I guess this is my recommendation, all 10-year, because one, the two were able to be changed, and the third one, they didn't feel was necessary. And I just kind of, the more I thought about it throughout the week, as I stated last week, I think that you'd still be able to buy any supplemental materials with that savings that you'd have there, so that's kind of why, obviously you can edit it if you so choose.
There was a discussion, Mrs. Dobus, last week about
Did I miss anything, Ms. Wells?
The difference in buying it for
Six years or 10 years?
Six years versus 10 years.
Which, just to be clear, it's not by, I just want to reiterate this, we did a lot of talking about, about years, but really it's about license usages. So it might be longer than 10 years, it could be, or it could be a little less, depending on the number of kids. But looking at the number of kids that we typically have, times the license, it should last at least 10 years from our
So Dr. Pascal, if I understood you correctly, though, you're expecting to get six years out of the first two, and the physics people say they'll probably get 10 years out of theirs. Is that correct?
It would be, we're expecting to get 10 out of all, out of all of them. I was just saying that when asked, Ms. Wells did communicate with the book company, and they are willing to make some updates to the online additions for the first two, although they don't see those as being super significant. Is that fair, Ms. Wells?
Correct, they, they don't foresee needing to make adjustments, but he said they could make, if there is something that comes out, they would make an adjustment, and that would be free of charge to have adjusted evil.
And then six, the physics just said they really aren't going to make changes, and they don't anticipate needing any changes. So that would have been one where we might have thought of reducing that number down, but the more I thought about what I was saying, I guess my recommendation to you would be to still go with the 600 licenses and use the savings for any supplements that might, might come, but that's your choice if you want to adjust that.
Ms. Wells, I have a question for you. Is the 10-year cycle normal for an AP textbook?
Yes, that's what the Science Department brought to us, that they were looking for, does AP license have a 10-year cycle for the AP Science course?
Okay, because that was an issue before, people were saying that 10 years is too long, but that is normal then?
Correct, with AP Science, that's what they're, they have on their outage website. For the AP Science, that's what they have on their outage website.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on that?
So, seven, eight-
Well, I'm going to go to seven next. So seven, this is the, Ms. Wells, you could jump in, but this was, as you might recall, we got the SMART grant. So this is purchasing of the materials for that.
Correct. So this-
Seven, just seven, I'm on, go ahead.
So this was the librarians of the five elementary schools, and at Neil Armstrong were the ones awarded the $10,000 in professional development training that began this last year in May and will last the entire next year. And then we had roughly $20,000 to purchase supplies, robotics, and coding, and other things that can be used in those six buildings. And so Mr. Ryer met with them, because he's also attending the training, to know what the requirements are of anything electronic that we would purchase. And this is what, he had a speaker come in, and this is what they decided they wanted to spend a portion of the money on, because it does come with not only hands-on material, but also curricular components, and it is integrated into the whole classroom, which we're using in the buildings. So this was their suggestion.
So that's for the PA SMART grant based upon the professional development. The last two, we've used asset kits, and basically, the company is going out of business. We're going to purchase some kits that are remaining from them, that they have left over for next year. In addition to that, the next item is looking at going directly to the vendor that they used to buy theirs from, and, and to purchase ones directly from those folks. And the total cost, just so you understand, is less than what we used to rent the kits from in the years past.
So eight and nine, we already currently use. We're just trying to make sure we have supplies for the future.
Because they won't do it the same way. The company will only be offering professional development. They won't be, they will no longer be in the business of sending the kits out. So one is, they had some kits remaining, but we were able to purchase, that we'll be able to have for that year. And others are the supplies to fill old kits or to purchase things that are going to, to allow us to continue to use those in some form or another. I mean, it's, it's pretty close to exactly what we had before. As close as we can get now that they're out of business.
Okay.
Any other questions on these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Dobus.
Okay, I'd like to move number 10, the 2019-2020 Title I, Title II Non-Public School Services.
Second.
Item number 10 has been moved by Mrs. Dobus and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yeah, please forgive me. I just don't understand it.
Sure. So what, what happens in, Ms. Wells, you could surely jump in, but what typically happens with federal programs, and we just got a compliance audit, a great one, so thank you, Ms. Wells, for that, is that we also have to service non-public schools. So that's part of the funds that we get. For a long time, you could just kind of pick your vendor. Recently, they've changed the regulations where you have to sort of bid that, that service out. So basically, what this is doing is Ms. Wells had to contact a certain amount of vendors, get pricing, compare to see who would be the best, and it is going to be, again, Allegheny Intermediate Unit is the, is, is our, our chosen or recommended vendor. So basically, before this, you just chose whoever you wanted, the grant got approved, and you got to go where you want. But I'd say it's been probably two or three years now, you've, two, okay.
So, so in a nutshell, the Title I and Title II funds that we've been awarded for non-public schools were awarded to the AIU to carry out the services.
That's, that's pretty much it. You're right. Yep. You could do it yourself, but many people just go through a vendor, and then, you know, everyone kind of shares in that cost, which is more affordable and, and go.
You get, you get the money, they provide the service, but you pay them 100% of the money that you, that you got.
Right. Okay.
Anything else on that item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries nine to zero. Thank you. Personnel Committee and Mrs. Rule.
There are 17 items under personnel. Are there any that anyone would like to have held out?
Number 13, please.
What was the number?
13.
13. Any other? I move that we approve item one, approval of extra duty responsibility program 2018-2019. Approve of extra duty responsibility program 2019-2020. Acceptance of resignation. Four, individual memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park Federation of Teachers. Five, memorandum of agreement with the Bethel Park School District Transportation Department. Six, approval to extend an unpaid leave of absence. Seven, approval to extend an unpaid leave of absence. Eight, change of assignment. Nine, approval staffing change. Ten, appointment of personnel. Eleven, approval of tuition reimbursement. Twelve, attainment of status of professional employee. Fourteen, approval of extended school year staffing. Fifteen, approval of summer help for custodial maintenance. Sixteen, approval of substitutes. Seventeen, approval of summer help for transportation.
Second.
Items one through 12 and 14 through 17 under personnel have been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mrs. Rule.
I move item 13, appointment of an outside event coordinator.
Second.
Item 13 has been, excuse me, item 13 under personnel has been moved by Mrs. Rule and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on this item?
I just was wondering, we, we did this last year, right?
This is a-
The same, this isn't the, the person doing the tech, the stage crew stuff?
Correct. This is a retro for this position.
For it's somebody to work with that person about-
Well, yeah, that's right. It's retro, and if we got a really big vendor come in, we, the person would be approved to be able to help if we would need that. It would be unlikely, but it could happen.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Yeah, and we had that discussion last week, too.
I'm sure. I'm sorry.
It's all right. We know you were in a good place. All in favor of item 13 under personnel, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries nine to zero. Facilities and Services Committee and Mr. Workmeister.
All right. Mrs. Cook, we have four items under facilities and services. Would anybody like any of them held up? All right. Here, I guess, hearing none. The first one is approval of upgrading the fire alarm system at the administration building. Number two, approval of paving contractor for the 2018-2019 budget. Number three, Peter Page Park Project. Number four, repair of the wheelchair lift at the high school.
Second.
Items one through four under Facilities and Services Committee have been moved by Mr. Workmeister and seconded by Mrs. Dobus. Any questions or comments on any of these items?
Yeah, I have a comment on number three, the Peter Page Park Project. That's hard to say. It's my understanding that we could still cede that property over to the municipality even after this action, correct?
We could.
Okay, because I really feel uneasy about them having a project on our property. I, I trust the borough council members that are in there now, I know them all, but 20 years from now, the situation might be different, and the maintenance might lag behind, and I would just as soon have that be totally their problem.
Right. We, we will work with the municipality and get back to you on this stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those carry nine to zero. Finance Committee and Mr. Amadis.
Yes, there are 17 items under the finance fighting committee. Anybody wanted to use all that for, for a discussion?
Yes, I would like finance items number seven, eight, and nine held out.
Seven, eight, and nine, are there any others?
Fifteen, please.
Hearing, no others, I would like to move items one through six, number 10 through 14, and 16 and 17.
Second.
I'm sorry, who's second? Thank you. Items one through six, 10 through 14, and 16 and 17 under finance have been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on any of these items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mr. Amadis.
Mr. Workmeister, you asked me to hold number seven, eight, and nine. Would you like them moved separately or as one?
Seven and eight to be combined, and nine being held separately.
Hearing that, I move items number seven and number eight, the number seven being establishment of tax rates, and number eight, 2019-2020 general fund budget.
Second.
Item seven and eight under Finance Committee has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mr. Nagel. Any questions or comments on these items?
Yes, I have a question for Mr. Karazi on the millage. Is there any way that we could lower the millage?
Under Act One, there's a limit on how much you can raise. If there's any, they fall under.
No, there's nothing in Act One. Act One sets limits on increases.
Okay, so hearing that, I'd like to propose an amendment to finance items number seven and eight, to set the millage then to 21 mills. Because I think eight sort of relates to seven, so I'm saying them to be combined, it looks like.
Well, if you're, if you're lowering the mills, that would change, not necessarily, it doesn't necessarily change the final number in the budget, but it would change the final general fund budget. So you would have to direct Mr. Karazi on, as part of that motion, on, you know, how he would make up the 1.8763 mills that-
From the general fund balance, then.
Can the two items be separated, Trish?
They can.
Do you need a motion to separate the two?
Um, yeah. So, so, no, we, we can separate them at this point, because I, I think probably they should be separated because they're, they're different. Or you can combine them as one motion, or just change motion eight. So it, it depends on what you want to do.
I'm fine with either way, whatever.
If, if part of his, if he's, if he's making the amendment on number eight, all he would have to do as part of that amendment is add how he wants to, how he proposes the 1.8763 mills be made up.
Okay.
And, and I think you said, I'm sorry, Ron, on this-
The 21 mills.
Yeah, but, but you would make it up through-
Through the general fund balance.
Okay, so I have an amendment on the floor to item seven, to change the millage to 21 mills. I need a second to that amendment. I will second that amendment.
Okay, so there's no discussion on, on whether or not you're going to amend. You vote on whether or not you want to amend the motion, and then if that passes, then, if that passes, then, then you can debate the new motion.
Can I ask a question before I vote whether or not to amend it?
There's not discussion on that.
Do we need a roll call vote for an amendment?
Yes.
I need a roll call vote on, to amend item seven, to set the tax rate at 21 mills.
Mr. Amadis.
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley.
Yes.
Mr. Christensen.
No.
Mrs. Cook.
Yes.
Mrs. Dobus.
No.
Mr. Means.
Yes.
Mr. Nagel.
No.
Mrs. Rule.
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister.
Yes.
So now, the, the new motion on the table is the 21 mills, then that new motion can be discussed.
So my question, Mr. Karazi, would be, what impact does that have on the general fund budget?
Well, 1.8 mills is probably between 4.5 and 4.7 million.
And percentage-wise, because we're recommended or required to keep so much in the general fund budget, percentage-wise, what, what percentage would that?
Well, the recommendation, the recommendation is, on general fund balance, a 5% to 8%.
Where would that bring us to?
We'd be, we'd still be over 8%.
We'd be where?
We'd still be over 8%. Our general fund balances, I mean, we have some committed fund balances that can be changed by the board, but we, we have about 20 million.
I'm, I'm having a hard time.
An uncommitted, 20 million in uncommitted fund balance?
Right now, we have, right now, we have about 6 million in unreserved fund balance.
6 million? And we're going to take that down to 4.7? I mean, we're going to take that down to 1.3?
Well, like I was saying, the committed fund balances total, and the committed fund balances and the unreserved fund balance total about $20 million. So we would have to move some of those commitments, if that's what the board wishes to do.
And so how do the commitments get funded?
Might be like the $8 million we have for Peasars set aside, and the $8 million we have for the healthcare thing set aside. Is that, is that the commitments that you're talking about?
Yes, and we have, we have $900,000 for tax appeals.
So they can be touched, the Peasars' money could be touched, because we are losing staff for attrition without really hurting that much, and we wouldn't be taking money from the general fund balance at all, which would stay between 5% and 8%. If we did it that way.
If that's what the board chooses to do.
If that's what we chose to do, yeah.
But, but my understanding is, a large percentage of our budget is due to staffing costs, and a large reason for that is because of trying to catch up to the obligations of Peasars. Is that correct?
Well, the, the biggest part of our budget is salaries and benefits.
So maybe a different way to ask the question. Our, our, our committed funds in the, in the general fund represent some future liabilities. Have those future liabilities gone down by four and a half to $6 million, or whatever?
It, it doesn't represent future liabilities. It represents money put away in case we need it for those things. So we don't have those liabilities right now, not on our balance sheet. We, we, I mean, the, on the upper level balance sheets, the auditors do an entry for our share of Peasars, which is way more than we'll ever have. And the healthcare, the way they calculate that in the upper level financial statements, we'll never have enough money for that either.
So why did we put away or assign the current level in the general fund?
Why did we?
Yeah.
Well, we did that to work towards those things.
But do they represent future liabilities that we're going to have to pay?
Can I say something, Buzzy?
He asked a question.
I'm going to, I'm-
No, I'd like an answer to this question.
I want to answer it. Before you came on the board, when I first came on, the Peasars was going up 4%, 5%, 6%. I think, did it, I think it almost hit 8% one year, didn't it, Buzzy?
Oh, I can't remember exactly.
And, and we were supposed to top out to where it wouldn't increase anymore. Now, it's still increasing, but it's only increasing at maybe half a percent a year. But when it was, and it's not supposed to go up like it was before, but when it was going up 4%, 5%, 6% a year, it was really scary, and nobody was really sure we were going to have the money in the future. So I think that's why that was put away like that.
I also believe that through attrition, how, of course, we have stayed on, our payment to Peasars and healthcare has been changing, and the anticipated amount that's going to be needed in the reserve fund can be lowered at this time, in my opinion. I, I think our enrollments have been declining. According to PDE predictions, it's a trend that will continue, the lowered anticipated birth rates for our district, and we've heard from many constituents, we've particularly heard this during the course of the election process, and while we said Act One limits how much a board can raise taxes, it doesn't limit how much you can lower them. I support setting this millage rate at 21 mills for the coming school year and balancing the budget with the dollars that are in our fund balance. When I came on this board in 2003, we had a budget deficit of approximately $3 million. We had zero, zero fund balance. That year, we- That year, we made forty cuts to positions across the district and we raised taxes over two-plus mills. At that time, we had an enrollment of fifty-two, fifty-two, total enrollment. We had four hundred and five teachers in June of two thousand and three. That was a student-teacher ratio of thirteen to one. Currently, we have approximately eighteen to twenty million in our fund balance, eighteen to twenty million from a zero fund balance in two thousand and three. We, in the end of the school year of seventeen eighteen, which was the final data that I had, we had a twelve to one student-teacher ratio. We had an enrollment of forty-one sixty-three in June of twenty seventeen, and we had three hundred and fifty-five teachers. I just currently got our total enrollment. I haven't factored in our teachers and things. We've got our May-June numbers. We're down to forty, forty-four. The taxpayers deserve to have some of this relief.
I haven't, I haven't heard one accountant do an analysis and tell me that our current general fund level does not need to be committed. And right now, it's just somebody's crazy idea, and, I'm sorry, it's a crazy idea to me. We haven't gone through and done any kind of analysis that says that we don't need this committed general fund budget.
First, I'd like to ask Mr. Karazi, do you recommend this?
I'll say, I'll speak there. I know you're asking him, but I will say this. Mr. Karazi and I worked on the budget that was presented, and that was our recommendation that was on the agenda originally. That being said, you know, we work at the direction of the board. If the board decides to lower that, then we'll have to work underneath those parameters. But I just want to be clear, not to speak for him, but our recommendation was on the agenda.
Okay.
I'm not saying that in that statement, I'm not saying that if the board directs us that we won't do our due diligence to be fiscally responsible. If that's the direction of board, we will work diligently as we always do underneath those parameters to do the best we can for every child in the school system. But I just figured it'd be best off if I said that on both of our behalf.
I appreciate that, Dr. Pasquarela. Now, Madam President, I'm glad you mentioned the election because I think this is directly tied to the election. You said that you heard from the constituents. Obviously, you did not. What the constituents have said, and you can see by the results of the election, is they want to see decreased class sizes. They want to see a settled contract.
Point of order, we're getting off the subject.
No, we're not. We're addressing the budget. That is the subject.
You're talking about class.
This is, this is, no, this is.
Point of order, can we have a ruling?
This is a direct attempt to circumvent the will of the public in order to hamstring the incoming.
One sec, let me address Mr. Means. Mr. Means, you know, it was something that was brought up as part of the election process and Mr. Nagel has the object.
Okay. This is a direct attempt to circumvent the will of the public in order to hamstring the incoming school board. And it's shameful, and this is the legacy many of you are going to carry with you if you carry this through.
Not hamstringing anybody.
Can I call for the question?
I have a, I have a comment before he calls for the question.
Not if there's still comments and debate on the floor.
Okay, so from your prepared statement that you made to the public at this point, Donna, it's obvious to me that there are six of you that must have had a budget meeting without three of us present.
Absolutely.
And that is against the law.
There is no, there was no budget meeting of six people.
You prepared a whole statement about that. You, I just saw you read a whole statement prepared to support that particular item that Ron just did.
Comments that I wrote because I have to write a Chronicles article.
And six people voted yes with no questions.
Absolutely. There was a budget meeting and I wasn't present at it.
Highly suspicious.
There was no board meeting of anybody.
Let me say again, the comments, the comments come now. There are not comments to amend, so that part of it is not, there are not comments when you're amending a motion.
Then I call for the question.
But there are comments now, once the motion is amended.
The motion has been amended, and this is the debate time.
And my comment is, I have heard from constituents, and I'm sorry, but you're totally wrong to say that they're not in favor of a millage decrease. I have a neighbor in particular, and when I was out talking with people, a lot of people said, when is it, you know, we pay way too many taxes. And I said, well, look, we have kept the budget the same for four years. And here, sitting in these meetings in the past, there was people in the audience even complaining about our fund balance, saying that we have too much money. The state has also increased their Peasars just today, I think it was, I read, in the, you know, for what they're putting for the pension. So there's a lot of things about it, and it just makes sense at this point.
I have been on the board for.
Is there a point of order? No, 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 not from the public. It's the board that's discussing.
For six years, I've listened to the hard work of Mr. Karazi, going through budget after budget after budget to take the numbers down to what he feels is a reasonable budget for us. And he's done a remarkable job. And every time before this, the six people who are, who are just recommending, recommending this new millage increase have said they support the superintendent and his recommendations. I've heard that not only in public, I've heard it in our private meetings, in our executive board meetings, you should be supporting. And right now, for some reason, we're switching gears now. We're not going to support our expert and the superintendent's recommendation for what is fiscally responsible for us next year.
Ms. Andrews is, I mean, carrying on with Mrs. Dobus's observation, which I agree with, I think that, you know, there's a violation, I believe, how I understand the sunshine rules. Can we call for an investigation?
The board can call for an investigation. People are allowed to talk about things, you know, it is an issue of whether or not there was a meeting. But, I mean, that's up to the board if they want to do that, absolutely.
Do individual members have that ability if they think a quorum made a decision without the full presence of the board and public notice?
Everything that you do would be a board decision.
Mrs. Cook, I just want to make a comment to what Mrs. Dobus recently said. You said that six of us up here have gone, gone now to go against what the superintendent and the budget director, Mr. Karazi's recommendation. I can go back and look at the notes, and I would be able to find a hundred times at least that the six of us went for what they recommended, and three of you would have gone against them every single time. So going against what they recommended is one time versus the hundreds of times that the three of you gone is not really anything in comparison to what you're saying.
You're absolutely correct. We've stayed consistent, consistent with what we've gone against them on. You've shown an exception here.
No, I think it's consistent. The consistency is that we want to make sure the tax has remained the same. You are consistent, you are correct. You want to add personnel, you want to add people, you want to add products to the school. And I believe in being consistent and listening to our superintendent say that we have enough personnel there. We've reduced the personnel for attrition. The move that has been proposed, in my belief, will not affect any programmatic changes whatsoever. We haven't affected any programmatic changes. We still have the same amount of teachers, except what we have lost through attrition. We still offer all the core courses. We still offer all the extracurriculars, and we have done that, and we will continue to do so with this current millage rate being set the same way.
All you just said just confirmed what I said earlier, is that six of you had a meeting without of us. Because you just said "we," "we," "we."
We right here.
And I've been told personally that I can't use that word. Because I can't speak for the board.
Pam, if you're claiming that we had a quorum, and you're going to accuse me of being in a quorum with the other five people, tell me when it was.
Anytime between now, today and when the last budget meeting was.
There was no quorum.
I have been on the board the longest, and we've been through two crises where we were in the hole, both times. We have never, ever had this kind of money in our budget as we have today.
Why didn't anybody bring this up?
Now, will you let me finish? I have not spoken. I have given you the floor. Everybody has turned this into a political statement, and we're trying to discuss the budget. The budget is simply, can I finish? That we have more than we've ever had in our budget. I was also one that fought to put some money aside for turf fields and things like that. We have been very prudent. We also, when we built the school building, we ended up spending less money than we had borrowed, and we were able to have money to do.
She is saying "we" because she's speaking as a board.
Yeah, I'm speaking for the board. We were all aboard, and we were all on the board. So when we say "we," I'm not the one here that has the authority to speak for what I'm going to do on the board. But anyway, right now, we, we agree to all of that, and we have been very prudent. We haven't had any layoffs. We've been able to add personnel, like our security people. We have been able to take on social services, many things we couldn't do, and still have twenty million dollars in our general fund. And you can say, your constituents can, as noted here by several people on Facebook, I am the old one. I'm the dinosaur. My constituents are saying, can't we do something about the taxes? They are footing the bill, and they have a right, and I have a right, as a senior, to make my comments. I feel we have an excellent, healthy fund, and we can afford to reduce it that small amount.
So let me ask, why we weren't discussing this three months ago prior to the primaries, prior to the results of the election?
Exactly, March, April, May.
Why, when we're finally passing a budget after nine revisions, when we're finally passing a budget, there's this surprise amendment that six of you have all your stats and figures together, but three of us had no idea that this was even on the table.
I, I, I don't care what anybody feels about their taxes, okay? What I care is, what does our budget look like, okay? I mean, at this point in time, yeah, I care about feelings three months ago and what people care about in terms of taxes going up and going down. That's what you evaluate four to five months before you approve your budget, not five minutes before you approve your budget. Right now, I heard what everybody's feeling is, and we're going to completely disrupt what Mr. Karazi's put together for the budget this year. Nobody has gone in, nobody, none of you have gone in and take a look at the general fund and determined if our allocations are actually going to be liabilities. And we're making this decision off of your feelings. I'm sorry. I don't care. I care what the budget is and what our long-term obligations are.
Our budget's millions over. If we always been, you know, we always compare to other districts. Upper St. Clair's budget is millions less than ours, and they have less students, and so, I mean, yeah.
Well, show me your financial analysis. Show me your financial analysis.
Mr. Karazi.
Okay, then how can we be talking about everybody's emotions right now and feelings when we're five minutes away from approving our budget?
You're talking about, show me your financial analysis.
I don't. That's what I'm asking.
Dr. Pasquarela, have you, have you guys been asked to assess this proposal as an impact on our fund or on our budget and what we would have to take that money from to balance this?
No, as I, as I said to you, our recommendation was what was on the agenda. That being said, we will work to be fiscally responsible and educationally sound with whatever the direction the board ends up going with.
So this hasn't been investigated, this hasn't been looked at in any way, but we're going to do this with no analysis, no, no insight, and no real discussion on the impact?
Just feelings.
You can't, I mean, you can't ask me that question. I mean.
No, I'm, I'm.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yes.
You understand what I'm saying? You can't.
Well, then let's just call that a statement.
Okay, so my statement remains the same, that we put out what we thought. I understand the fiscally responsibility and the direction of the board. If that's the direction they go, then we will work, work within what we have to do the very best job that we have, as we always do.
I've heard a lot about fiscal responsibility. I've always pledged to be fiscally responsible. If this was brought up three months ago when we were having this discussion to begin with, and the numbers worked and it looked like it was feasible, I may be for it. But I'll tell you right now, if this gets approved, it's one of the most fiscally irresponsible things that I've ever seen. It is a direct attempt to hamstring an incoming board by members who are trying to serve their own agenda.
Could we delay this budget vote for a week or a month? Have a special meeting in July?
You cannot. You have to pass a budget by June.
And we have a motion on the floor. The amendment to the motion was to raise, to set the millage rate for item number seven, establishment of tax rates at twenty-one mills. I believe we're ready for a roll call on establishing the millage rate to twenty-one mills.
Mr. Amaditz?
Yes.
Mrs. Buckley?
Yes.
Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobus?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Means?
Yes.
Mr. Nagel?
No.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
That motion carries six to three. Now we need to handle item number eight in relation to the setting of the millage. And, Ms. Andrews, how would we, so the motion would be made as is with the remain, with the one point eight seven six three mills to be made up through the fund balance? Mr. Amaditz, do you want to make that motion?
Yes, I will make the motion that the board of school directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty general fund budget in the amount of eighty-nine million, thirty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-four with the balance to be made up, of the balance of one point, excuse me, one point eight seven six three mills to be taken from the fund balance. Excuse me, to be taken from the general fund budget.
From the fund balance, from the fund balance, yes. I need a second on that.
Second. Not a lot of confidence there.
Item number eight has been moved and seconded by, has been moved by Mr. Amaditz and seconded by Mr. Means. Any discussion of this item?
We got an email from a citizen, all of us did today or yesterday or something about, something about the taxes and how they should be lowered. I'm just wondering, that person, I think, is friends of some people on this board, and how did that person know what we didn't know?
That's one of the ones that we've heard of.
Yeah.
We'll do a roll call on that one, too. Number eight.
Mr. Amaditz?
Yes.
Speak up, own it.
Mrs. Buckley?
I will speak up and own it.
All right, speak up and own it.
I don't need you to tell me what to do and how to speak.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
I'm just saying.
Did we record?
Mrs. Buckley is voting right now.
Mrs. Buckley. Mr. Christensen?
No.
Mrs. Cook?
Yes.
Mrs. Dobus?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Means?
Absolutely, yes.
Mr. Nagel?
No.
Mrs. Rule?
Yes.
Mr. Workmeister?
Yes.
Okay, and now we're to motion number nine, and how do we need to adjust that motion?
The last number in the, in the motion is, that's driven by the millage. So if you want to give me a few minutes to change the millage in the system, I can come right back and tell you what it is.
Okay. All right. So it'll be the same motion, but the.
Everything's exactly the same, except the last number is driven by the millage.
Go ahead, Buzzie.
Yes, please. Thank you.
I was going to say, you can, you can involve up the politics committee.
Where we have, we had number fifteen.
Oh, Mr. Karazi is the secretary, so.
Okay.
Probably should wait for him to.
Okay.
I'm sorry, but yes, fifteen is also.
The last number changed from 7257 to 7,906.15.
I'm sorry, 7,906.
Point 15.
Point 15. Mr. Amadis, will you make that motion?
Mrs. Dobus, I think you just want the last one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Amadis?
I move number nine, Homestead and Farmstead Exclusion Resolution. The Board of School Directors approves the administration recommended, recommendation to approve resolution number 84 hyphen 2019 as a property tax reduction allocated, allocation funded by $1,700,137.75 gambling tax fund for homestead credits on 10,240 households in the amount of $166.03 on an assessed homestead valuation reduction of $7,906.15.
Need a second?
Second.
Item number nine has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Buckley. Any questions or comments on this item?
I have a question of this solicitor. So, once the budget is passed at the end of June, can it be changed at any time between that June and the following June?
Only, you can, you can change allocations of where you have money, but only, I think, in the last nine months of the budget.
All in favor of item nine, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries six to three. Item 15 now, Mr. Amadis?
I'm going to be a purchase of a laser engraving system for the high school tech ed department.
I need a second?
Second.
Item number 15, under Finance Committee, has been moved by Mr. Amadis and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any questions or comments on this item?
I was just wondering what the tech ed department does with the laser?
The simp, well, the similar tool of lesser quality has broken, so they, they need to replace that. I think they do many things. It's a pretty creative tool where with laser engraving, obviously what we think of making things, you know, even like these, these types of items or signage or lots of other creative things in our coursework that they're able to do.
Well, you know, I think we should start saving money, so I don't think I'm going to vote for this, because we're going to need to make up all those, you know, taxes that we're not collecting.
That laser, was it, you know, not repairable and how old was it?
Right, it was, I'm not exactly sure how old it was. Do you remember that, Mr. Karazzi? I know it came up from our curriculum facilitator. It's been an issue and basically, they were trying to get one this time that was a little more dependable, that's supposed to last much longer and we have better success.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries eight to one. Policy Committee and Mr. Means.
Mrs. Cook, if it's okay with you, I'd like to break this into three different things. We have something to be approved, a waiver, and then something else. Is that all right? Okay, we have five items. I'm going to move items one and two unless anybody would like one of them held back. Okay, I move number one, policy revision, third and final reading. Policy 150, Title I, comparability of service. Number two, approval of policy, third and final reading. The Board of School Directors approves the administration's recommendation to approve the 702.1 crowdfunding. Do I have a second?
Second.
Items one and two, under Policy, have been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any questions or comments on these items?
I have a question about 150. So, it talks about comparability of service. So, I was just wondering if our inequities in class numbers among the different elementary schools pertain to this comparability of services because they aren't comparable. So, the policy pretty much says we have to have comparable services and if we have different numbers and so forth in classes, is that affected by this particular policy?
Well, I'll let Ms. Wells, do you want to speak specifically to that?
Sure, so there's a, they send us a program in which we have to enter all of the staffing in the buildings and the per pupil numbers. You have to exclude the staff that is paid by federal funds from those buildings and then you have a list of certain people that you exclude and if you exclude them in the high school building, I've excluded the same listing in the elementary and I M S and we have to, to be fair, and then it calculates a number, a percent, and then it tells you whether that is comparable or not in terms of Title I. Whatever that percent is, memory serves, and I didn't look at it real recently, but you have to be under the building with the same grade span in the elementary that is not Title I. And as long as that percentage is under, then it's considered comparable of services. For example, this year, where Washington was the one who did not receive Title I funding, and I believe their ratio within the higher teens and all the other buildings were at like 14 percent or something.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't know if this is a self-control mindset, but we don't calculate it. We enter it into a system and get it run and it comes out whether you're comparable or not. It's not completely controlled.
And so if we're not comparable, then we just have to adjust what we do?
We haven't gotten comparable, so I can't speak to that. I don't know what would happen. I've done it twice, two years, so I don't know.
Okay, I just was wondering, because the way it was written, I couldn't quite understand that. And then for 702, I was wondering, this is a new policy. It looks like we didn't have one before this, so I'm assuming that this policy is going to be actually given to all the groups that it might pertain to, which would be all the booster clubs and all those who might, might employ crowdfunding. I wouldn't want us just to pass it and not to make the, the people aware of it.
I think so.
Okay.
Let me go back to that, though, I mean, just very briefly. I, I didn't think it, I thought the way that we were crafting it, did it really apply to booster groups, so?
I thought it was applicable to any group that was trying to use crowdfunding.
Yeah, I think you're right. But to your point, it should be distributed to everyone that it would apply to, yes, so they know.
Because it says, organizations not granted formal recognition by the board as an eligible organization shall not engage in crowdfunding. So, although the beginning seems like it might be the district itself.
Eligible, yeah, should mean booster groups.
But it would be, but I think that it also includes the other, other groups, too.
But they'd have to get approval, was my point.
Right, right, yeah.
They couldn't do it on their own.
Right, that's why I want, I want it to be publicized that we've passed this.
Well, right, it needs to go out to everybody.
Any other questions on these two items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those items carry nine to zero. Mr. Means?
Okay, number three, waiver of procedure. The Board of School Directors waived the procedures requiring the three readings for policy 220, attachment for policy 220, and policy 808.1.
I need a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Item three, under Policy, has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any questions or comments on this item?
Yes, I believe this is because the policies need to be passed in a timely manner before the school year starts and our next meeting will be in August, correct?
Right, so that they can go in the student handbooks. All in favor of waiving the procedure, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That carries six to three. And, Mr. Means?
Okay, I move number four, policy revision, final reading. Policy 220, Student Expression, Distribution and Posting Materials. 220, Attachment, Student Expression, Distribution and Posting Materials. And policy 808.1, School Lunch/Breakfast Program Charge Meal.
Second.
Item four, under Policy, has been moved by Mr. Means and seconded by Mrs. Rule. Any questions or comments on this item?
So, as I read 220, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Andrews, the, it pertains to, if a student is texting another student and it's sent during the school day, this applies to them, but not if they're sending messages outside of the school day?
Let me.
Here.
It's the Student Expression, Distribution and Posting of Materials. It's 220, policy 220?
Yeah, what, what page is this?
Oh, no, I'm just, I don't know what page, yeah, I'm just saying in general, we can't govern, we don't govern what happens outside of the class.
Yes, I'm sorry, in general, that's correct, unless something that happens outside of school has a nexus to an issue within the school system. So, there has to be a nexus to outside conduct and disruption of the educational process within the school system in order for us to have any authority over something like that.
Okay, thank you. And then the, the school lunch, so it, there wasn't a cross-out on that, it was just that $50, if the negative balance is $50.
Oh.
So, I just didn't know if we upped it, lowered it?
It was a typo, because it was, it should say negative now, right?
Says negative balance.
Yeah, before, it didn't say negative. It just said 50.
Oh, okay.
And we caught that as a mistake.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. It should, that's what we were doing all along, but it didn't say that, so when we read it, we were like, well, we better amend that so it says negative.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on item four? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That carries nine to zero. And then you just have one for.
Yeah, number five, just an announcement, policy revision, second of three readings, and that's policy 913, non-school organizations slash groups, individuals.
Thank you. Public comments and anything you wish to address the board on, you have two minutes, name and address, set the microphone.
Sharon Jansik, 4314 Anna Street. Wow, that was, I'm so disappointed. I've been coming to your budget meetings for years and years and years and you know, because I'm often one of the very few people who's sitting here, and never once in the four years and all those budget meetings I've been coming here have I heard any one of the six of you who voted for that mess and debacle mention that before. Not even this spring, not at our last budget meeting. And no, you had to bring it up as an amendment purposely so that no one would know and public couldn't make a comment on that and give you our feedback. And, and clearly, everybody knew that that was going on. So, I hope you're proud of yourselves. You were able to sneak that in there and you have shown the people of Bethel Park exactly who you are and exactly what you stand for. We appreciate that. I'm very sorry for the students here because students' needs need to be met and it's short-sighted. And even if you are correct that that would work out, you didn't do the numbers, you didn't run it, you didn't show anything. We've never discussed it, never been up on that board. The public is not known. That's, it's sad and disappointing and I try really hard when I come here to be nice and to be kind and to be professional and I don't feel like the six of you were that tonight. And that's about all I can say about that right now. Thank you very much.
Mary McGarrett, 2894 Maple Street. I originally came to address the, I'm, I'm as angry as you are. I'm sorry. It was beyond words what I watched here tonight. I'm only sorry I didn't try to get involved sooner. The disparity in the kindergarten, the incoming classes, the class sizes, it's an ongoing problem. I haven't heard anybody speak about doing anything to address that. All I hear is fiscal responsibility, cut the taxes, seniors deserve that. Well, guess what? We need to pay the taxes because we need to invest in these kids. And some of us, as grandparents, are raising their grandkids and we're paying these taxes because we want them to have the education that I had growing up here as one of, I've, I've lived here, born and raised here, so has most of my family. And I am just appalled by what I saw here tonight.
Amy Morrow, 231 Logan Road. I'm thoroughly disgusted with how tonight was handled. I'm more disgusted in the six of you that I found out on Facebook tonight what was going on during the meeting and had to walk out of a family function to come here and speak for the general public who had no idea that this was going on tonight. The numbers have not been run. We're already falling behind. We face a severe shortfall with the quality of what our kids are already getting, especially special needs. This just seems like a very underhanded pathetic grab and an attempt to keep a few seats on this board. And I think that this was done that way on purpose so that the general public wasn't here to say what they really think and feel about how this was handled. And the six of you should be ashamed of yourselves and I think you'll find that on Election Day.
Anyone else? Any board comments this evening?
Yeah, I have one. It's been touted that the academic status of Bethel Park has been declining and that's been propagated by a, some people quoting the U.S. News and World Report statistics that we were ranked 277th. And anybody that takes a cursory look at that can realize it is really not a valid evaluation of our high school. They place 30% of their evaluation on how many people take an AP class and how many people pass an AP class, an additional 10% on how many people pass more than one AP course. Coming up with that, they came up with us as 277. As an example, they wound up with Taylor Alderdyce 99 places ahead of us. Taylor Alderdyce scored 8% lower than us on the math scores and they scored 15% lower than us on the statewide English scores. Additionally, Taylor Alderdyce has a dropout rate of 18%. We actually send a higher percentage of our people to college than Taylor Alderdyce graduates and yet that particular evaluation that people want to quote for their own purposes to run down the board, run down the district, places Taylor Alderdyce 99 points ahead of us. of us.
I would say the analysis is irrelevant, okay? Those whole rankings are, are what people look at when they're moving to our community. And I would also say that our ability to influence those rankings costs very little, okay? It's just a changing approach in terms of how we recommend that kids take, in that case, for the U.S. News and World Report AP test. We have to be cognizant of how some of these rankings, what they're biasing in their, in their reports, but these things are absolutely important as people are looking to move into the community.
We could have had an intelligent conversation about that, Barry, but your group decided to come out and send out a robocall saying our students were being denied a quality education and yet we see eighty, eight percent of them are going to college.
I, we haven't had one discussion about that in the last two years about any of these scores, okay? We've turned our head the other way.
Only thing I would make a comment on that is, is we have sent people to AP training this summer. We've just purchased on this very agenda AP books, so I'm not sure that it's fair to say that we've done nothing.
No, that's, I'm very happy to see the AP textbook purchase as well as the training that we're doing for, for the staff. It's fantastic.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to be argumentative. I'm just saying that we have, we are trying to address that. We're looking into it. We're working on it. That was evidenced even on, you know, the last couple of agendas.
Another thing that goes into the ranking, which you said we have control on, but we don't, and that's diversity. And that was one of the things that's in there and we have no, as a board, any control in trying to make sure diversity is whatever level it is. That was one of our problems, too.
So, I'd like to go back to the big issue from tonight. We spent months going over a budget with Mr. Craszi. Mr. Craszi, I, I appreciate all the hard work you did. I'm sorry it all got thrown away tonight and you have to start reworking everything. I took a pledge to be fiscally responsible, but to also look out for the education, health and welfare and safety of our students. I always took it for granted that everybody on this board thought that keeping kids first was a priority. Always gave all of you the benefit of the doubt. The community over two elections has spoken about what they see as priorities for this district, what they value. And there's two election, the results of two elections that overwhelmingly show that they want to see improved services, they want to see smaller class sizes, things like that. I've been very consistent in what I've been pushing for. I trust that Dr. Pascarella and Mr. Craszi will do the best they can with the budget that was just approved. I'm sorry it was a surprise to you guys. It was a surprise to me also. I will continue to try to push to do the best for the students that I can under these circumstances and make the decisions, the best decisions for the education, the health and safety of our students going forward. But to the other six of you, you just cut, you potentially cut the legs out from under our children. And you did so without consulting the people who have been crunching the numbers for four months. You did so without giving any time for a proper discussion, proper amendments and proper review of this. And this is the legacy that you're going to carry forward because you did so vindictively, you did so self-servingly, and it's disgusting. And I don't give you the benefit of the doubt any longer that you want to keep kids first because if you did, this would have been discussed months ago. This wouldn't have been a surprise. And I'm ashamed. I'll finish by saying there's going to be another school director's town hall on July eighteenth from six to eight P.M. in a classroom of the community center. I hope that people can attend. I'm sorry that we may have more fiscal constraints to work with the ideas that the community wants and the community has shared with us, but we will do the best we can with the resources we have in order to provide the best education and a best future for our students. And we'll do so with deliberation. We'll do so with looking into things and with informed decisions.
I can't believe how irresponsible this was. I mean, come on, we were sitting here a week ago looking at the budget and this just came into your heads altogether at once, six at one time? This came into your head in the last, what, hour? That we're going to lower the, the, our revenue stream by eight percent? That's a lot of money. I hope that you guys, you six, are a lot better at finance accounting than Mr. Craszi. Surprise me, okay? Just surprise me. Show me your knowledge. Where's the numbers? Totally irresponsible.
And.
But I hope you're happy. Adios.
This is what transparency is, I guess.
I, I can only speak for myself. What I saw in the budget, what I heard from my constituents when I walked the streets and went to the polls and saw from the community, we had and still have a healthy, healthy fund balance. People have told us in a number of years now, I think there were articles written about it, that we were putting away too much money. And the reality is, we have been fiscally responsible. We, there is nothing in my mind that I have voted on that will take anything from any of our children. We have the, the children come first. The children absolutely come first. This move has nothing to do with any monies allocated to our children. We have, for the number of years, had a declining enrollment. We have, through attrition, eliminated teaching positions that ultimately makes our bills with Peasars and healthcare coming down. There was a healthy, healthy fund balance. We had more than enough money in savings. You will not be hamstringed to run this district and we believe, I believe, I can't say we, we voted as a board, so we, we can say we in that fashion, I believe that the taxpayers deserve that break in their knowledge rate.
What you say may be true. It may be. And if we went through this three months ago and we did an analysis and we found out that our general fund, you know, in, in terms of those, those earmarked expenditures have gone away because maybe Peasars are capped out and we're not going to see an increase, I would have been on board. I would have been a hundred percent on board if Mr. Craszi told me, and it was his recommendation, that we could lower the taxes. But his wasn't. His recommendation was not that. And somehow, six of you became better experts in finance than him.
That's right.
I don't understand how that can happen.
Any other board comments?
Yeah, just waiting to, as far as the budget goes, I mean, we've never vetoed anything curriculum wise. This budget is still intact as it was, you know, as far as what we just voted on. We didn't change anything there. All we did, or what I did, you know, is for, you know, proposing this was to go ahead and take some of that money out of the general fund to go and give it back to the people because I didn't really know how important it was to the people until the election, going around talking to people door to door. And that's what my feeling was. And I have lots of people, I had neighbors and things like that, that said exactly this. And it just sort of came to me that, well, yeah, this is a good thing to do. We have the opportunity. We're not going to change, you know, any curriculum. All the budget itself is still the same. It's just that, that budget now is a little less as far as the fund balance goes. And Peasars increased their rate at the state, you know, just increased theirs. And it goes on, you know, so.
So, the election was a month ago. You were talking to people, I assume, prior to the election, but this only came up tonight. So, why couldn't we have had this discussion? I, I share Barry's view. I'm not necessarily against a cut. What I'm against is an arbitrary cut to try to hamstring, hamstring the incoming board because that's been your only focus. That's all your focus is and you're trying to circumvent the results of the election by reducing the.
You're putting words in my mouth. That is not.
No, I'm, I'm giving my opinion. Please, for the record, this is my opinion.
I, what I did.
Well, you voted against the recommendations of our experts.
Can you vote against the recommendations of our.
I, I do. I do. But I do it after asking questions. I do it after doing homework. I do it after having public discussions about the issues and having private discussions in executive committee. I don't do it just off the cuff without the board having an input and without the public having an idea of what I'm doing. There's a big difference.
So.
So, try that one again.
So, so Jim, you asked me, what day did you all meet? Give me a date. I, I asked Ron, when did this illumination come to you that you just talked about? I'm done, I'm done.
Any other board comments?
This is Kukivanday.
Mrs. Buckley?
I want to make sure I'm being heard on the speakerphone, I wanted all of you to share my thoughts. Can you hear me, please?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Dear members of the Bethel Park School Board, Dr. Pascarella, and educators, and taxpayers in attendance that are leading tonight, June twenty fifth, twenty nineteen, as well as taxpayers who will be watching our monthly voting meeting on DPTV. As most of you know, I have spent many years involved in Bethel Park School District. I was an educator for thirty seven years prior to being elected as the school board director in two thousand and nine. Without hesitation, I have devoted many hours to the district and am proud to have the opportunity to do so. That being said, there are more of my personal concerns than I have brought to light. For some time, I have had concerns about the attitude of some of my fellow board members and taxpayers in our community. I stress that it is some because some taxpayers may not be paying close attention until, because of their daily lives are impacted or their children's programs or their tax bills arise. Recently, I read an article in the newspaper that truly caught my attention. It discussed the school district in Pittsburgh that involves their massive debt, putting a squeeze on their school budget and its debt and taxpayers. It further says that people stop paying attention and when you stop paying attention, things like that happen. It's important going forward in future school years that people watch the decisions being made and how they're made. We have to make a commitment that things continue to be done the right way moving forward. It is my opinion that most importantly, our children have and should continue to remain our first priority. The Bethel Park School District provides excellent programs for all children and that is something of which I am very proud. For the past ten years that I have been, excuse me, have been on the school board, we have worked hard to do the right thing for the children while still remaining respectful of our fiduciary responsibility to the taxpayers as elected officials. For the benefit of the children and taxpayers in the future, we must provide for today while remaining steadfast with future expenses. I apologize for the length of my comments. Thank you for your time. Cynthia Shawty Buckley, Bethel Park School Director.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.